Exactly. Are we ready, Madam Clerk? Watch out for the volume a little bit, it's a little high. Yeah. Is that better? Everybody here, out there? Good to go? Great. We're on the record? Great. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, both here as well as at home watching via Zoom. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Session for this Monday, April 15, 2024. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Bransetter.
Here.
For Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And now, if you'd all stand and join me in a brief moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. A moment of silence tonight is in recognition of the families around the world, regardless of which side of the aisle you may be on, that are struggling in the face of enormous challenges to peace. So, a moment of silence in recognition that peace is a preferred option, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight, we have no proclamations or presentations for that section of the agenda, so lucky, all of you, you get to go first. We have our public comments section, which is next. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance so that we can have clarity and transparency for our record. Please note that even if you did submit comments in advance, you are more than welcome to either read them or provide oral comment tonight, enhancing what you've provided in written form. We're absolutely happy to have you here tonight. There are two public meetings this evening as well, so if you are here to testify specific to those particular public hearings, you can reserve your comments for that portion of the agenda. It'll be better if you are commenting specific to those two topic areas because that creates a record of testimony for those particular public hearings. But if you're here for general public comment, thank you. Members of the audience who are here for public comment may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business, and your comments are limited to three minutes each. We simply ask that you go to the podium. If you've signed in, if you haven't signed in, you're still welcome to go to the podium, provide your name and your residence of record, and then we'll have your three minutes. Virtual comments are also allowed. Under our rules, you can provide virtual public comments by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee, by dialing the telephone number 253-215-8782 and entering the meeting ID number that should be present on your screen. If you don't have it, it's 868-7263-2373. When you enter the room, please use the raise the hand feature so that the city clerk and I can call on you and see you. I'm going to turn on my little monitor here so I can do that. And so, we will proceed with those first who have signed in. And the first is Carla Pelster, followed by Bill Pelster. If he is so inclined, it looks like you've put down no, Bill. So Carla, you're up.
Mayor, excuse me, just for the record, we did receive written comments in advance of this evening's meeting. We received those comments from Mary Pepp Bergensperry, Manny Candler, Eric and Jennifer Chandler, Casey Crook, Jen Imholt, Melissa Jackson, Carlo and Judith Manetti, Gretchen Utkin, Tricia Parsons, Carla Pelster, and Victoria Stanich.
Thank you very much. Duly noted. Welcome, Ms. Pelster.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. Again, my name is Carla Pelster. My husband, Bill, who is also attending this evening, and I have been 19-year Lakewood resident. We wish to express our opposition to the proposed expansion of the residential target area, or RTA, on this evening's agenda, starting on page 175. The proposed expansion of the RTA allows parcels to benefit from the possible incentive provided by multifamily tax exemption, which includes a certain percentage of the multifamily homes being affordable. We know this area has already been zoned for these types of homes. We are not opposed to multifamily and affordable homes. There are already these types of units in Lakewood. A huge multifamily complex is already planned in place of the Barnes &amp; Noble. There are a number of small businesses currently in the area that are part of this proposed expansion. We hope you are not waiting for their leases to expire and encouraging the owners to sell to developers. The former library is also in this area, as are already existing apartments. Multifamily housing never makes the neighborhood better. They only add to crime and traffic congestion. Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest is already congested during morning and evening commute times. Half of the parcels are not even across the street from the current Central Business District Residential Target Area. The multifamily housing will ruin the quaint feeling in this part of town. However, the big issue, we feel we are not, we're not given proper notice of the change. Nothing by mail that we're aware of. One only posted on the city website and buried in emails from the city. Not easy to find. When it was open for public comment on April 1st, it was on page 104 of the agenda. From the minutes of that meeting, it appears 16 citizens provided comment with only two for the expansion. Perhaps tax breaks could be given to encourage the creation of small businesses in the area. In our opinion, the city permitting process is broken and discourages small businesses. Thank you for your time and service to the city.
Thank you. Next, Alan Mason.
Hello, my name is Alan Mason. I'd like to speak to you on regard of the Edgewater Park development and renovation. I know one of the primary issues we're trying to resolve at Edgewater Park is the lack of parking. I think there's probably two or three primary issues. One of them, lack of parking. The other one, the boat ramp. But I want to speak about lack of parking because today, on the busiest days, well, let me even go back. I think we have five or six parking spaces now that go up the hill from the boat ramp. Five or six. So, on the busiest days, let's say we have 20 cars show up. So that means we have 14 or 15 cars that may be illegally parked and five or six cars in the, on the hill, in the designated areas. If we do this park expansion, add 19 parking spaces, as your master plan has identified, and we add park benches, picnic areas, pocket beach, swimming areas, fishing piers, on our busiest days, we're going to look at having our amount of people show up at least double. And that's part of the point of the project, is to add access to the lake, right? But if we double from 20 cars to, say, 40 cars, well, now we have 19 parking spaces. Do the math, that still means we have 21 cars that don't have a place to park. So my point is, is by adding all these additional features, we're not solving the initial problem of there's no parking. In fact, we're amplifying the problem. As it is today, like I said, we might have 14 or 15 cars that don't have a place to park. But under the new plans, we're going to have over 20 cars that don't have a place to park. So my suggestion is this, and maybe this is something to reconsider. The park needs attention. There's no doubt about it. And I'm for giving the park some attention, but let's clean up the blackberry bushes. Let's even add the parking, because we need the parking. But adding a park, pocket beach, fishing piers, all these different amenities, just bring people in, and that's fine, that's the point. But if we're adding so many more people that we still can't accommodate those people, have we really solved the problem? We haven't solved parking, you know? The only other issue is, the boat ramp definitely needs addressed. So, let's clean up the blackberry. Let's make the park more inviting. Fix the boat ramp. But we add all these other amenities, and we're going to end up attracted more than we can handle. It's like trying to put a Costco in the place of a Taco Bell. The space isn't there. It just doesn't work. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, Susan Mason.
Hi, guys. I'm just going to read from my notes, if you don't mind. This is about the proposal at Edgewater Park. You know, it stands before us, and there's a multitude of unanswered questions and unresolved issues. First and foremost, the research conducted, or rather, the lack thereof regarding the environmental impact of this development is alarming. The local wildlife that thrives in the natural habitat faces an uncertain future should this development proceed without a thorough understanding of the consequences. The water quality at Lake Silicon, a jewel in our community's crown, could deteriorate, affecting not just the ecosystem, but every resident who holds the lake deer. It feels like we're putting the cart before the horse by doing all this planning work and seeking grant approvals by not involving our state's environmental and ecology impact departments, first to see if any of this would even be possible. Second, the Parks Department approach to community engagement has been less than satisfactory. While they've heard our concerns in public forums, their failure to follow through on getting answers to some questions has been very disappointing. Over the past six months, numerous times, there have been questions raised as to what this project will cost. There were never answers until the document that was shared with you all in the study sessions on April 8th. I was shocked to see $8.6 million price tag. Grants awarded would only account for at most about $3 million. And I question if using $5 million on development of a two-acre park, which has been serving our community for decades, as is, is the best use of Lakewood's public funds. I truly believe if the residents of Lakewood fully understood the costs involved for such little ROI, I think they'd be appalled and see it as an unwise investment. Multiple times, the question of budget for maintenance in the improved park has come up. No answers have been given on how to ensure that it will be kept up with all of the new amenities that are going to be added and on all of that new stuff that could, you know, easily fall into disarray because we see how the park has been neglected by the very department that's proposing to improve it over the past decades. You know, instead of solving existing problems, this development threatens to introduce new ones into our community. Concerns about lack of police patrolling and response to issues have come up. Historically, more people means more problems. Who's going to be there to help monitor if these new pocket beaches and fishing piers are being used, as they're supposed to? That the parking is being taken by the proper people, et cetera? The space in question, the natural haven we're fighting to preserve, is more than just land. It's a legacy of untouched beauty for our community. The proposed development would strip away our opportunity to experience nature in its purest form. The area is simply too small to be morphed into a facility that would serve the community as intended. I stand in opposition, not against progress, but against progress that will, that is blind to the cost it imposes on our environment, our trust, our safety, and our collective wallets. I ask you to vote with foresight and responsibility. Vote to preserve the natural spaces and the integrity, the community's trust, the things that we've asked for that we're not being given right now. So I ask that you vote against moving forward with it. Thanks.
Ms. Mason, real quick, Ms. Mason, for you and your husband, if you could just state your residence. I know it's Lakewood, but we have to have that on the record. Not your full address, just Lakewood, Washington.
Hi, I'm Susan Mason. I live in Lakewood, Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I know it seems silly, but we're trying to keep a record. I appreciate that. Okay, next, Jody Polarsky.
Good evening. I'm Jody Polarsky, and I have been a Lakewood resident for 21 years, and I live right at the boat launch. I'm also very concerned and agree with everything that's being said about the Lakewood Park concerns. I attended the Clover Creek Watershed Presentation at the Planning Commission, and I became more concerned after that presentation. The Clover Creek Watershed Council had mentioned in their final report that the aquifers are not adequately refilling for Lake Silicon and the Clover Creek and Ponce de Leon coming into the lake. Those tributaries directly affect the level of the water in Lake Silicon. One of the recommendations was the removal of the Chamber Creek Plant, I'm sorry, Chamber Creek Dam. My understanding is that dam also affects the level of the lake. My question is, if we don't have the aquifers being adequately refilled, if we take the dam out, is it even viable to have the boat launch in the most shallow portion of Lake Silicon? We have no idea what that environmental impact is going to be. If you're going to be doing those types of plans to really address the issue of the creeks drying up and the salmon habitat and the natural habitat of the lake, I think some more planning and research needs to be done on the effects of this before Edgewater Park plans move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Polly McLean.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, and members of the council. I'm Polly McLean, and I live in Lakewood, Washington. We've lived kitty-corner from the boat launch for almost 22 years. I was a resident of Lakewood for 10 years. Prior to that, also lived on Hipkins for 10 years. I'm also concerned about the plans that are going forward for the Edgewater Park improvements. And I'm not in dispute with modifications and improvements, but we have been attending the planning meetings, and there's concerns that we have raised, and we would like to discuss this further. There has been a map that's been proposed. I would like to express ideas. Instead of parking in front of the residences, could the parking spaces be next to the park? And what I saw online is that this park is a quarter of an acre linear park that runs along Edgewater. And it's been just left. I live right across from the park, and I haven't hardly seen a crew come in and mow the grass. It's very intermittent, that months go by, and there's been no care and concern for the park. It's a wildlife sanctuary for us. The winter ducks come in, there's eagles nesting in the trees, there's river otters. I'm just concerned, the shoreline, it's the only natural shoreline. I'm just concerned about the plans that are being proposed feel way more than that area can tolerate. I'm all for sharing the beauty of the park. And if you, you've seen the use study, that's 12 days out of the year, that is significantly dates when the park is primarily used. I would love the opportunity for the residents to come together to discuss maybe some of your ideas, or if we could give input, since we live across from the park every day. And we're going to be impacted if there's parking lots and fishing piers. There's going to be swimming without a lifeguard. I mean, there's just so many concerns that I have that I would love to discuss before this plan gets approved and the grant is submitted. It just feels like it's, it's great to have ideas for bettering areas in Lakewood, but I would hope that you would give this more time and discussion before you go ahead and approve this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Gerwin.
Good evening, city council. Jason Gerwin, Lakewood resident, Chair of the Lakewood Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And so, just a little bit of context. Parks are my passion. I've been a 30-year professional in a South King County municipality, served as Deputy Director. Served on this Lakewood Park and Recreation Advisory Board for about 20 years now, and served as Chair for about 10. What I can say about this process, in that 30-year career, it's been one of the most contentious processes I've seen. You know, top three, for sure. And the Lakewood Parks Department and the city has always worked really hard to find consensus amongst the community and its citizens. And with that being said, that was the same goal here. A lot of the talk and chatter and debate, unfortunately, went to social media, as things do these days. I personally don't participate in social media. My wife does, though, and I felt compelled to engage in social media and at least read, so I had the context of the flavor of what was going on out there in the community. And in over 400 comments read, other than maybe, what I can count on one hand, maybe five were factual, were really looking at the case, other than what I deem social media just fodder. It, throwing up comments to make comments, or not being productive in the debate. So with that, came a lot of misinformation out there. And that misinformation, unfortunately, spread. And I hope that the community will go back and look and find out what the true case of this is. I think City Manager Caulfield had a brief conversation with him, and it was in process, but he took the time to put out a document that explained the city side of the story. And to me, that provided great context that maybe many, myself and many others, did not have. So that was much appreciated. It is contentious, and you're coming into people's neighborhoods, and you're making changes. There's an old book back in managerial days called Moving My Cheese. And we don't want to move anyone's cheese. What we're trying to do is make the community better. It's been a city goal for my entire tenure on this board, to increase the access to lakes. We are called Lakewood. Our citizens need access to the lakes. Period. We've struggled for 20 years to make this happen, and we have an opportunity for us tonight to make a decision that allows for greater access for this community to the lakes. With that, I see I'm coming up on time, but I would ask the city clerk if I could be afforded more time as I serve as the Chair and speaking on behalf of an organized board.
I will grant that, since he's speaking on behalf of an organized board. How many more minutes do we typically allow for expansion? Just so we have it, to be fair.
Mayor, that would be a decision that you would be able to make at this time. We could provide three additional minutes.
And I can make that, I can make my points in that time. Thank you. And so, what we do believe, we believe the city has done its due diligence and moving forward with the greatest good at heart. And you have a chance to cement that with a vote to move this master plan forward. We're making changes in that neighborhood and potentially taking a family's home. That's a decision we don't take lightly. But when you really start to look at the facts of that, it comes down to property law, and it's really basic property law. Through this process, we've heard about 12 main concerns. This plan addresses 10 of those 12 concerns. Two concerns it doesn't address have to do with a different department, and that would be the police department. What this plan does for the community, although it's inundated at times, and maybe a dozen times a year where it makes it kind of unbearable for the community, allows for greater enforcement of our police department. It defines the areas you can park, where you can go, where you cannot go. That allows for enforcement, which is now somewhat ambiguous. So with that being said, you know, the Lakewood Parks Board requests that we talk to the police chief, and we have those engaged in those talks, and when enforcement is needed, it's there. But I also know it's difficult when you only have so many patrol officers in a city, and you have other serious issues going on. This city and the Parks Department has a track record of working well with the community and being a good neighbor. The Lakewood Parks Department, I believe the city, has those intents in mind as well in this process. Several concerns have been brought up on maintenance, in regards to maintenance on this topic, and it's something that I've advocated for years, being that's my background in park maintenance. And I advocate constantly for more park maintenance. We need to take care of what we got, and we would like to see increased allocations for park maintenance. But after all these factors, careful consideration, you know, the Lakewood Parks and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously approve this plan for Edgewater Park, and we request that the city council accept this preferred alternative and move forward. What I do want to do is I want to take a moment to thank city staff. Their professionalism through this entire process deserves accommodation. Their patience and diligence in trying to see this through is commendable. And that's all due to the leadership of Mary Dodsworth. She's an impressive individual and a fantastic director in trying to do the right thing for this community. So with that said, let's continue the track record we have as a city. Let's make improvements to this park that will make the park better, provide more access, and hopefully make things a little more tenable for the community and the neighbors that live adjacent to it. With that said, thank you for affording me the additional time.
Thank you for coming and for your service as Chair of the Board. That is the last individual who has signed up on the sheet, but again, let not that deter you. If you'd like to address council during the public comment period tonight, while you're here physically, you're more than welcome to do so. Just queue up at the mic and provide, again, your name and your residence for the record. If you are here again for the two public hearings, and I'll just state them, just so everyone knows. We have a date set tonight for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 Consolidated Action Annual Action Plan. That would be one of the two. And the second one is on the proposed resolution of the council acknowledging application of what's called the non-user statute. It's an old, ancient concept involving real property and relinquishing any interest the city may have in an unopened right-of-way, as described in the packet, and as requested by the abiding property owner, Range Properties LLC. So those are the two matters for the public hearing. And if you're here for either one of those two, this isn't the time. I'll announce it shortly. But if you're here and you haven't had a chance to address this during public comment, now's the time. Otherwise, I'll turn to those who are here virtually. Yes, sir. You may.
Hello, everyone. Good evening to you. My name is Abraham Yurjelidi, resident of property at 9132 Edgewater Drive, South Face Lakewood in Washington. The property, which has been, with the request of the Board, your Park Director, condemned under your approval, unfortunately. The reason I am here is to say that if your Park Director cannot take care of the park which is there, why is he here? He should be put to work to clean it up, and that we do not have to call 71911 call. If they want to condemn our home, maybe they better do a better job. Just don't make it worse for these people. Please listen to them, not to him, who hasn't done his job, and he acknowledges it. He cut me off last time when I wasn't speaking and took the microphone away from me. He didn't want people to hear. And this is very, very wrong. When I, I do have these maps here. Everybody is willing, who would like to look at them, they are welcome to look at them. I have to say something. This map was put to deceive this board. It's not correct. And I want this decision to be changed. And as you mentioned, there is an option for no action, and you approve that. We don't, we work for our home, and we got it, we built it to what it is. We don't want you to become a force of destruction. Based on this document from the Pierce County, we own 18,500 square feet of taxable property, which we have paid taxes for, so did people before us. Your commission surveyor has stated that what he has came up is inconclusive. In other words, he has washed his hands off of it, so he doesn't accept no responsibility. And you wanted us to accept that in writing on what circumstances, before you condemn our home, when we didn't, and we proposed an option. And we proposed an option that we are willing to work with you, you decided to condemn our home. You wanted us to commit to whatever you had came up, and then say, oh, their boundary dispute is all over. Of course, all properties over there on that Edgewater Drive have a boundary issue, not ours, but we are only targeted. This park, if it's gonna be that, I asked this residents who are here to call it a racist park. I am sorry to say that. I do not want to say that, but you are, you are free to call it that. If they don't listen to you, they didn't listen to any of you last time, and if they don't want to listen to you now, you have an option. You can exercise that. Thank you very much.
Just to before we turn, anything else? Yes, just one comment. Mr. Gerwin, who spoke previously, is not an employee of the city of Lakewood. He is a citizen volunteer on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I just want to make that clear for the record. Next. Next. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Steve Hibbs, and I live on Wilder here in Lakewood. Um, and I attended two weeks ago regarding the multifamily housing zone tax incentive expansion, as I understand it. Um, and I learned a lot that day. Thank you. Um, but it came away, and it took me a day or two to really process what was going on, or what I think is going on. Um, and it was explained that the area in question, whether it's pink or yellow, um, is all zoned for multifamily housing as it is. Um, and then the yellow portion of that has tax incentives involved for developers to build multifamily housing, and the pink is where they would like to expand it. And I'm thinking, well, if it's already incentivized and it's not happening, um, why is that? Because isn't the whole idea behind incentivizing uh, development in certain areas to direct the development to that area? And it sounds like that's been scrapped, and Councilman Branstad had a question two weeks ago. And he asked if there was already engagement with the developer, uh, to the person that was here from the Planning Commission, I believe, and they answered affirmatively. Um, so what that tells me is that the developer wants to build multifamily housing, but he doesn't want to do it where it's already incentivized, and he doesn't want to do it where it's not incentivized yet. Um, so he wants to have his cake and eat it too, which is, well, I guess neither here nor there, but what it tells me is that we have the developer tail wagging the city of Lakewood dog, and that just leaves a bad taste in my mouth, so I hope you'll think about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one last call for anyone physically here before I turn to virtual public comment.
Hi, I'm Yasmin Smith. I've been a uh, community member for over fifty years in Lakewood. And I'd like to just talk about homelessness and how homelessness is overextended. And um, we have a resident here at Edgewater, and he's gonna get his house condemned. And I just feel like we've already have so many homeless people. Why would we do that to our neighbor? You know, we should um, our neighbor, love our neighbors as ourselves. And if it was my home, I would want, I would want my neighbors to come and say, hey, don't take her home. She's been living here for over a decade, paying taxes on the, on the house, being a good neighbor. Uh, he and his wife are doctors, and they've served the community. And uh, last and about, about six months ago, I came up and I spoke about this. And I was kind of um, talked down to when I said, oh, you want to take his home for a parking lot? And then I was told, I don't know, you don't know that it's for a parking lot. Well, now we hear it's for the park's parking lot and for boat trailers. So it's come to fruition. And so I'm saddened about that. Thank you.
Okay, last call for folks physically here, if they want to make, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got to queue up to the mic. Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Lakewood. Uh, served in the military for twenty years. Came here in nineteen seventy-nine, and so I guess I'm a Washingtonian forever. Uh, I love this state. And I recently found out about what was happening to uh, one of my neighbors. I live right by the water. Uh, and what was happening to him, and I couldn't believe it. I thought there had to be some kind of mistake. And so when I went to see the developments at Edgewater with Mary Dodsworth, she gave us three options. Option one, two, and three. Now, obviously, we didn't vote on it, but I really don't know where we stand. But one of the options was is to take Abraham's house. The park can still be developed without taking his house. It's a beautiful house. I went inside. He put a lot of his money into that house. And I just can't believe that we are in a country where our home is our home. I've been to communist countries, and we're not in a communist country. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, that maybe we can think about what we're doing to this man's home. It's not just a building, it's a home. Thank you.
Okay, I think I've covered everyone who would like to address counsel in the public comment who are here physically. Uh, seeing no additional folks, then we'll turn to those who are appearing virtually. And the first, I'll start from the bottom of the list, James Dunlop.
Uh, can you hear me? Uh, can you hear me?
Mr. Dunlop?
Can you hear me?
Don't give him a chance here.
Can you hear me okay?
His mic isn't working. We can skip and go to the next person and then come back to Mr. Dunlop. Dennis Haugen is next, and then Mr. Dunlop, we will come back to you.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Used to live in Lakewood for many, many years. It sounds to me like your planning is missing.
Hold on, Mr. Haugen. Hold on just a minute, please. Want to make sure our sound is working for the benefit of all.
Mr. Haugen, can you please state your name and city of residence?
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, uh, listening to your meetings, it sounds to me like you got, the bureaucrats have a little bit too much power, and there's not enough power to the people, and especially the homeowners of Lakewood. But then again, your planning is missing something. Your major employer to the town, or the biggest employer next to the town, the military is having difficulty recruiting military people. And what's often suggested or said by military people, they just don't want to, they don't want to go into a situation where the military is into this woke stuff. And uh, so there's, doesn't seem to be any estimate as to whether you're going to have a decrease in people who deserve a house and deserve to live here and are legal. Then you're also a sanctuary state. You don't respect the laws of our border. And that, of course, in many cities causes many, many problems. But I'm not going to say much more. I'm going to give you a couple of books to read. I will suggest The Man Behind the Curtain, which is about George Soros. And it's written by Matt uh, Matt, Matt uh, Palumbo. It might give you an idea of what's happening to the legal system in not all but many big cities. The other book I would suggest that you read is Raising a Jihadi Generation by John Guandola. And it, uh, it basically tracks down how terrorism is financed and financed in perpetuity. I suggest you read those two books. And then, of course, a lot can be said for the schools, but we won't say anything for the schools tonight. I noticed they're not there. It seems to be the usual time, but many of your residents and taxpayers, I suggest you listen more respectfully to them. They pay the taxes, they make your paychecks, and they take care of you. And uh, that should be the strongest word, and I don't see that happening around your planning. I think your planning is highly defective because it's not taking in some of the things that need to be looked at. Thank you.
Next is Christina Minetti.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I'm Christina Minetti. I live in Lakewood. I've lived here for over fifty years. And uh, I'm here this evening to ask you to reject the Edgewater Master Plan, which would adversely impact my family's neighborhood and the environment, including salmon habitat. I am here primarily to defend my neighborhood and my neighbor, whose house is going to be condemned and demolished to make a parking lot for five boat trailer spaces. Eminent domaining someone's house for a five space, five space boat trailer parking lot is completely absurd. I don't know what people were thinking. To destroy something of such value for something so worthless and even objectively bad is simply evil, and you should remember this. To destroy a family's life for boat trailer parking spaces is unbelievable. Has Lakewood been completely blinded by the vision of those elusive dollars that you hope will shower on Edgewater Park from heaven? That money isn't free, Lakewood. It might seem free to you, but that's our tax money too. And we don't want millions more of it to be wasted on this mindless project like we've seen elsewhere in town. The public was not presented with a no action plan, uh, no action option, which is the norm. Um, were neighbors included in that body, by the way? And are there any neighbors from this neighborhood of mine on the Parks Department Board? As you've heard from many people already, this plan would have a seriously detrimental effect on our very nice neighborhood and its salmon habitat and the environment in general. This, that the city of Lakewood purports to want to restore, they do this even in writing. Moreover, this plan appears to be primarily motivated by a bizarre obsession with enabling more motorboats to pollute Lake Stilicum. The city pleads the need to increase public access, but they should be more precise in their terms. Why don't they tell the truth? It's not just about increasing public access, because the access has been there for more than half a century. It's a strip, a small strip of land along the road, though the city now calculates the road and across the road, apparently in its new and improved measurement of two point eight acres, instead of the one acre it's always been in the publications. The city talks about equity, but they should come out and say it like it is. This is about increasing access for a very small number of boat owners, many of whom are not even from Lakewood, so they can come put their boats in the water during the short summer season to the detriment of everyone else, plus the lake and wildlife. These are delicate and impaired lakes in Lakewood and need to be protected. Lakewood should not encourage more motorized boaters. You can have as many kayakers, row boaters, fisher, fisher people, whatever you want, but you don't need more motorized boats in that shallow, impaired, salmon-bearing lake. I ask you to also reject the expansion of the tax incentive area for multifamily buildings and subscribe to the comments submitted by Carlo and Judith Minetti, as well as others on this topic, and also the Edgewater topic. I appreciate your consideration of these matters. Please take them back to the drawing table. I appreciate it.
Next, Tukamir Dunlop.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, so, well, I'm gonna be commenting on the same thing everybody else has been commenting on, but
How about your residence for the record?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Um, my name is Tihomur Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood, but I'm currently in Seattle.
We can barely hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me better now?
Better, thank you.
Hello, my name is Tihomur Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood, but I'm in, uh, currently a student at the University of Washington in Seattle. Regarding the, the boat parking lot and the proposed demolition of Dr. Mirjelili's house, besides the very kind of obvious reasons why, you know, taking his house away is wrong. I think i- if you look about it, if you think about it, okay, so it's a very small park. It's a very small strip by the edge of the lake, and it's very clear, as it is right now, that um, it's not, it's not a piece of land that really should be supporting a large amount of traffic, and it's already overwhelmed as it is. If you go there, you see, you know, oil on the road that's like going into Lake Stilicum, um, which is obviously bad for salmon and, or, you know, or water and all of this. And uh, if you put a parking lot there, it's, it's not, you're, if you're putting a parking lot there, if the intention is to make it so there's less congestion, what you're actually gonna see happen is that all of these people who are going there now are gonna go use the parking lot. And then because it's less congested, you're gonna have even more people going there, and then you're gonna have the same problem you started with. Right? Like, people will, people consistently use things to capacity and then overdo that. So you're gonna find, you know, if you build this parking lot, you'll find in five years or whatever that uh, you're gonna be exactly where you started with, except you have more pollution going to the lake. You're gonna have a family that's lost their house. You're going to, you know, it's gonna be even more of a mess, right? And this entire time, it's still overgrown with blackberries. So you might as well go clean up the blackberries and actually make the park look nice as it is first before even considering building a parking lot. Like, it seems like a complete backwards order of priorities. Yeah, it's frankly just really stupid, but uh, that, I'm almost out of time, but uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next is Kim Underwood.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to um, speak about these issues. Uh, my name is Kim Underwood. I've lived in the city of Lakewood prior to incorporation, about forty years now. Um, I guess first, I'd like to address the taxation incentive plan. Um, I have asked for previously, at previous meetings, um, a net fiscal impact statement because I believe that the city, citizens within the city, um, deserve to know what the net fiscal impact of this tax incentive and development of high-density housing will have over time upon the city. Um, number two, um, I listened to Jason Gerwin's uh, comments regarding the advisory board. I respect their dedication and commitment, volunteerism. However, um, the increased access to lakes seems to be biased in that we do not have access to all lakes. Uh, let's outline Gravel Lake uh, within the community. Um, as well as, I am a member of the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council, and uh, after our presentation, we had the opportunity to speak to numerous members of the Planning Commission Board, Advisory Board, and we also found um, a additional concerns regarding the Lakewood Parks Advisory Board in that the Lakewood Parks Advisory Boards and Planning Commission Boards are only asked to comment on things that they are requested to comment on. Um, when specifically I asked about the eminent domain project of members of the Parks Department Advisory Board, so they knew nothing of this plan in the beginning. And so it's a little concerning as to why the city of Lakewood has these advisory boards, if only to satisfy a state commitment or requirement when actually you don't take them seriously. As far as the eminent domain, um, I never thought in a million years I'd say this, but I think the city of Lakewood needs an ethics committee. Um, with all of the state grants, which the state seems to, the city seems to rely on for improvements, um, that are being poured that are being poured into the Chambers Creek Clover, uh, estuary down there, I believe that we should have signs along Chambers Creek saying, hey, salmon, turn around because once you hit Lake Stilicum, you're gonna meet pollution. And as far as, um, the gentleman that's about to lose his home, I would refer him to adverse possession, um, cases that, uh, apply to public property, recent Washington court ca- court case of appeals case, Mike, uh, Michelle versus City of Seattle. I think that he may find that useful. Um, thank you very much.
Next, Trisha Parsons.
Uh, can you hear me? This is Trisha Parsons.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, hi, counsel. Thanks for, uh, listening to me again. I, uh, spoke, uh, la- I think last week. Um, and I just wanted to continue to, to reiterate, um, some of my thoughts about the RTA expansion. Just a second, sorry. I'm on my phone, so this is a little difficult. Okay. Um, I just want to say that I, I urge you to vote no on this tax exemption expansion. There are many other locations in our city that are already in the zoning area that would benefit more highly from these tax exemptions and should be made to look more desirable for development. These areas would also house more individuals and with a better overall infrastructure already set up for development. They're closer to public transportation services and would have less ecological impact on our city. Gravel Lake Drive is the, in the area proposed is the longest stretch of a tree-lined street in our main city areas. It makes a section of our city beautiful when a ma- majority of it is now a pavement wasteland. I know all of you are seeing the same things I'm seeing when we drive down these main roads. It's depressing, and encouraging more apartments on this street and removing trees will make our city even more unappealing. Developers will develop and move on when they are done, when they are done. For us, Lakewood is our home, and we need to care more about the people who live in this city, pay taxes in this city, and who love this city and want it to be better. Do we need to give people tax breaks in an area that does not need redevelopment? No. Are we thinking about all the ecological impacts this could have near creeks that feed an already heavily polluted lake? Lake Stilicum is a dirty lake, being fed by dirty creeks, and residents are eating fish out of th- these waters, which is highly concerning. Most of the people speaking out against this are honest, hardworking people who just want good things for the city and want good things for future citizens. Expansion of the RTA on Gravel Lake Drive is not one of them. I fail to see how expansion into this area will help our city. I believe your citizens would be more involved if we had better access to information. Um, I feel like we're, you know, we're starting to get more information, but we've really had to push for it. And, um, and, and neighbors are now getting involved, and I think that's really important. And I salute everybody that showed up to the meeting tonight. Thank you. Keep coming. We need you. Um, uh, please help us keep Lakewood beautiful, the parts of Lakewood beautiful, and let's start making the areas that aren't beautiful better. There's plenty of options for development not in this area. Please vote no on the expansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. James Dunlop.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is, uh, James Dunlop. I'm a resident of Lakewood. You know, I do walk around the lakes, wor- around the lake, around Edgewater, and I talk to people. And I have talked to people over the last month, I suppose, yeah. And I do get their impression about, get their opinions about what they think about these, the three, three plans and developments. I've only come across one person who actually supports what you're doing. I mean, that person had some good arguments, but overall I've only come across one, one person who supported it. And I'm just, just wondering about this concept of, of ease of access and this, you know, giving, giving the people of Lakewood access. That's, that's what the city says publicly. To understand, I think, what the real reason for developing the park is concerned, I think that would be really difficult for an ordinary member of the public. I think you'd have to do numerous public records requests. You'd have to get your public record request. I don't know, you'd have to do it. You know, you, but you'd never get there because you'd never get to the reason, because public, public record requests are hard. We don't actually know what the real reason why the city wants to develop that park. I mean, as far as public access is concerned, I think we all understand the importance of public access. And I'm sure there are things that could be done to improve public access. But what I don't really get is why there is the obsession with large boat owners, largish boat owners, you know, not the kind of boat that you can carry into the, into the lake, for example, a kayak. But why are you going out of your way to support this group? You have a, you have this, it seems that you're considering, with your, your planning on demolishing and Mr. Muj- Dr. Mujulili's house in order to put a parking lot for five trailers, and it seems to be the whole thing. Why, I just, I, I don't understand why you ask, why the city is so concerned with dealing with that particular minority who has large motorboats. You know, these are people who have probably have a reasonable amount of money. Most people in Lakewood, ordinary people in Lakewood can't afford large motorboats on trailers. Why? And if you were really concerned about access and you really felt that you could, were able to demolish, and okay, you, you, you take control of Mr. and Dr. Mujulili's house, you, uh, pay him a fair amount of money for it. Okay, if you're really concerned with access, why don't you just demolish it and extend the park? Why do you, why do you feel a great need to put parking spaces on it? I mean, those parking spaces, you know, in the end, I suppose, in a few years' time, what are the, what's it gonna be used for? I mean, it's just gonna be a place for buying drugs. Uh, perhaps people are gonna put their RVs there. It's a place for, maybe for, you know, we've got a growing homelessness problem. That's what it's gonna end up as, because generally when you make a change, it's never a change for the better, I don't think.
That appears to be the last virtual hand raised, Madam Clerk, that I can see unless I'm missing a hand.
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your comment. I'll declare the public comment period closed. But I would also encourage you, uh, if you wanna hear deliberation on these items, stick around a little bit. A lot of people make comment, and then they leave, and they have the opportunity to certainly see the video. But it may be instructive to, to hear the council grapple over these issues because they're not always easy. And these policy issues, for the many reasons you've articulated, are challenging uh, for many good reasons and brought to us by citizens serving on our many boards, like Planning Advisory Board or the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, for good reasons. So they're challenging, and so I appreciate you coming tonight and providing comment. So now we'll turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of March 25th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council retreat of March 30th, 2024. C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 1st, 2024. D, motion number 2024-23, authorizing the purchase of materials and supplies in support of the Tensler log, excuse me, Tensler Library Log relocation to Fort Stilicum Park. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 17th, 2024. Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2024. Three, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of February 7th, 2024. Four, Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 7th, 2024. Five, Community Services Advisory Board meeting minutes of February 20th, 2024. Six, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of February 27th, 2024. Seven, Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 6th, 2024. And eight, Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 20th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the Fiscal Year 2024 Consolidated Annual Action Plan. For this, I'll call on our program manager, Mr. Jeff Gumm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Um, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, is the public hearing for the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. As part of the CDPG and Home Consolidated Planning Process, um, grantees are required to cons- to participate in public, to have a participation, public, man, I'm having a hard time, sorry, excuse me. Grantees are required to include a public participation component into their CDPG and Home allocation process um, to determine how funding will be used for community and development needs for low and moderate income households and individuals. Um, this public process is a two-step process. The first is to be conducted at the start of the planning process. That was a public hearing that was conducted by the Community Services Advisory Board on February 21st. The second part of the public participation process is a thirty-day comment period, which we are currently undergoing. It's March 29th to April 29th. In that public comment period, we are holding a, a public hearing tonight, um, to receive public comments. The city has received some comments to date. Um, comments received so far have focused on homebuyer activities, housing counseling for first-time homebuyers, financial literacy counseling services for youth, um, the expansion of program information in multiple languages for persons, persons with limited English. So we have received a few comments. Uh, to complete this process, again, this is the public hearing on the 2024 CDPG and Home Funds, of which the city is anticipating and receiving $535,000 in CDPG assistance through housing and urban development. We will, we plan on receiving $392,000 in program income, totaling $927,000 in CDPG expenditures. As part of the Annual Action Plan, CDPG funds are proposed as follows. $354,000 is proposed to be allocated to the major home repair program. $24,000 is proposed to be allocated in services, or sorry, in the emergency assistances for displaced residents. Um, $60,000 is proposed to be allocated, uh, for services for Habitat for Humanity. They have an aging in-place program which they're looking to fund. $80,000 is allocated, is proposed to be allocated for CDPG emergency services payment program. $10,000 is proposed to be allocated to CDPG home admin services. $107,000 is proposed to be allocated for program administration, and $292,000 in NSP-1 abatement program in income is to be reallocated into the same program for NSP-1 abavements. The home program, um, the city anticipates to receive $290,000 in federal assistance in 2024. There is a $68,754.91 component of program income received, totaling $358,754.91 to be allocated. Those funds are proposed to be allocated in the amounts as follows. $329,754.91 is propo- is proposed to be allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund, and $29,000 is proposed to be allocated to the city of Tacoma to cover the city's 10% admin costs. So those are the, uh, funds that are being proposed to be allocated as part of the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. And with that, I turn it back to the mayor and council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gumm. Any questions of Mr. Gumm? Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gumm, thank you for the presentation. And I know that this is a, an annual project that requires focus on a lot of details and numbers and things to do that. And we're, uh, the fact that this plan doesn't have a lot of change and it is somewhat, irrespective of the fact that it's the fifth year of a five-year plan, and, uh, next year, the the book has more bla- blank pages that you can fill things in. Uh, there was a, a couple of things, though, in your memorandum that I don't know that, uh, may- maybe the public clearly understood going into this hearing. Uh, and one was that you indicated that the numbers in here are estimates and that they could change based on exactly how people in the other Washington actually divide up the money that the Congress actually appropriated for these, these buildings. And the recommendation was to, uh, if there's any less money, to prorate it across all the items on the, uh, uh, on, on the agenda. But, um, what would happen if there's more?
The, the recommendation would stand the same, to pr- to prorate in inverse, in essence, so add to programs in accordance with the prorate, prorata, depending on what was awarded.
And so when you talk about prorating, that, uh, some of these categories, like major home repair, has both a CDPG element and a program income element, but you're only talking about the CDPG element. $100,000 can't be prorated to go anywhere else because it's program income from that program. Is that right?
Correct. The prorata would just be on the, on the yearly allocation.
Okay, and so, um, and the, and the same, same would be, would be true in the abatement program of where if there was a shortfall in CDPG funds, it wouldn't affect the abatement program at all because all the money there is program income.
Correct. The NSP-1 program has to be used for NSP-1 activities again. So it's, it, it comes into a revolving fund and is required to be used for the same activities.
Okay, then, on a variety of topics that have been before council lately, there has been discussion about the effectiveness of our public participation programs, um, that, um, the and I note that in this particular thing where there is a public participation program that started with a public hearing before the Community Services Advisory Board, but that, um, no one showed up. Um, and that in your memorandum, it lists several other opportunities for public comment to be made. And it is either no comment is, uh, listed, or it's, it's, the, the thing is, is that the comments will be added because the, the, the written comment period runs for another two weeks and, um, and we have weather comments that will be here tonight to be able to go and, go and do that. So is your expectation that any comments that are received from one of the remaining opportunities would get documented and be available to council before we have to take final action on the plan? Is that correct?
Yes, and any, any comments received from this point forward are documented in the Annual Action Plan, and it's updated. What, what you have at this point in time is a draft of the, the comments, and a draft is, I, I believe I put insert comments as, as received. So they will be updated for council to re- to review.
And we're well through this process now, but I think that after we get this year taken care of uh, and, and do that, and we go into future years, if you and with the consultants that work with you can give some consideration as to how we might get the public more robustly informed about what's in the plan with the goal of getting some more robust comments from people. One of the things that I think is happening through a number of issues this year, but where there's interest in public comment is I think we're, we have an opportunity to pique public interest in paying more attention and commenting on things that actually are going to impact the community. Um, that, that's my only comment.
Well, and this is the opportunity for the public to comment at the hearing today, but I understand your point about trying to get more people to be involved to comment at a hearing like this. Thank you. Any, uh, just questions of Mr. Gumm before we open the public hearing? Any other questions of Ms. Gumm? Mr. Gumm? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. This is, uh, again, it's not time for council action tonight, uh, or study. This is the opportunity for the public to provide testimony on the Fiscal Year 2024 Consolidated Annual Action Plan. As previously indicated in the hearing tonight, public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted Testimony may be submitted in advance to the city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at B Schumacher, at CityofLakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the council electronically, and the clerk will now read those names of those who have submitted testimony for this particular public hearing in advance.
Mayor, we received no testimony in advance of this public hearing.
Very good. Before I turn to those who have signed in to address and provide testimony during this public hearing, again, if you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, that is also acceptable during this particular public hearing. You'd have to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number indicated, 253-215-8782, enter the requisite meeting ID number, and then use the raise the hand feature. So I will now call on members of the audience here. I have no individuals signed in on the hearing roster to provide testimony. Again, if you would like to address, counsel provide testimony on this particular topic on this public hearing, you may do so. Seeing none, I'll turn to those who are appearing virtually to provide testimony during this public hearing on this topic only, the fiscal 2024 Consolidated Annual Action Plan.
Millions of people coming across the border illegally, and we have states and cities that support this, even invite it. These people put demands on housing as well. And sometimes it's through illegal gain from drug sales and even government programs. I think the answer is simple. If you don't want to comply with federal law on the border, then we should cut you off entirely of all of these funds. Cut it off. And I think there's many people, and I think there's a lot of states where people feel just like I do. Cut it off. Stop the grants. Stop it until you're willing to obey the law. The law is simple. If you don't come through the gate, you're an illegal immigrant, totally disrespecting our laws. And then in many cases, we see where NGOs are down there. Well, a lot of that money comes from the federal government. And we're seeing all these things on the news. I don't know, you know, there's different kinds of news out there. I don't know what you know, because I don't know what news sources you have. But I think it's getting well spread out where all of this, so much crime and so much demand on services. And even it can be a demand on housing that kicks people out who are here legally and deserve help. But I don't hear any voices from Washington State in the news to start obeying the law. And until you start obeying the law, you don't deserve one nickel of my tax dollars or any federal tax dollars. I live in a city that's got tremendous growth, but it's growth for people who want to come and work. I have not seen a tent in this city and metro area of almost 300,000 since I got here. So cut it off.
Next? Any additional hands raised? Kim Underwood?
Yes, thank you, council. Again, Kim Underwood, I've lived in Lakewood for over 40 years now. Was originally drawn to this area. It was basically a very coveted area at the time. Wish I could still say that, but in, in any case, I'd like to see more transparency as far as the significant portion of local government budgets. They are affected by the geographic patterns of development, including streets, construction, maintenance, water, sewer, infrastructure, fire protection, police services, solid waste removal, school transportation.
I'd ask you to keep the comments focused on this particular 2024 Consolidated Annual Action Plan.
And that's exactly where I'm going, is that I'd like, I'd like to see that more transparency as far as the net fiscal impact of the projects over time. Because I believe that a lot of the things that are approved are being approved right now have, will adversely financially impact our city. Our city is basically, we don't get anything done here unless we have grants. And I think that that's a consideration. I'd, I'd love to see more sustainability over time. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last hand I see raised during this particular public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
I'll declare this particular public hearing closed and now turn to the next public hearing. Madam Clerk?
This is the date set for a public hearing on the proposed resolution of the city council acknowledging application of the non-user statute and relinquishing any interest the city may have in unopened right of way as described herein and requested by abutting property owner, Grange Properties LLC.
And for a brief overview of this matter before the hearing, I'll call on our city attorney, Ms. Heidi Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker, your city attorney, and we have brought a couple of different types of vacation before you over the past several months. And we have previously talked to you about the non-user statute. And it begs the question, why are you having a public hearing if this has already been vacated by operation of law? And Ms. McCain, our assistant city attorney, has developed a little bit of expertise on this topic and believes that the wise course is a legislative ratification of the non-user statute applying to a particular piece of property. And the reason that we give an opportunity for public input is in case someone is aware through either a plat or a court decision or something like that, they could bring that forward. But it's not the same as when we do a regular vacation. I would be happy to try and answer any questions, but this is the time for the public hearing, and you get to see me again when it's time to look at the proposed resolution itself, which is later tonight.
Absolutely. Any brief questions of Ms. Walker? Seeing none. This is the date set for the public hearing on the proposed resolution of city council acknowledging application of the non-user statute as indicated. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment as previously indicated. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at B Schumacher, at CityofLakewood.us. The clerk will now read the names of those who submitted testimony in advance.
Mayor, the city received no testimony in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Very good. Testimony will be allowed, both in-person and virtual, up to three minutes per person specific to the public hearing topic. So I see no individuals who have signed in to provide testimony during this particular public hearing, but again, let that not hold you back. If you'd like to provide testimony during this particular public hearing on this topic, feel free to step forward to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll turn to those who may be attending virtually who would like to provide virtual testimony. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to ordinances. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 802, Designating Lakewood Downtown Tax Increment Area, Setting a Sunset Date for the Increment Area, Identifying the Public Improvements to Be Financed, Indicating the City's Intent to Issue Bonds to Finance Public Improvement Costs in a Maximum Principal Amount Not to Exceed $15 Million, Providing That the Increment Area Will Take Effect on June 1, 2024, Imposing a Deadline for Commencement of Construction and Providing For Related Matters.
Thank you for this. I'll call on our Economic Development Director, Becky Newton, to provide an overview. Again, as a reminder to the audience, this is a, a matter which we spent a significant amount of study time on, but this is helpful for all of us in the audience.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. As Mayor stated, and Ms. Schumacher, this is potential adoption of the Tax Increment Finance Ordinance, number 802. In your packet, beginning on page 104, is the ordinance as well as the significant analysis that was prepared and the state review and comments. Washington State Legislature did pass Bill 1189 authorizing TIF in 2021. TIF is a very powerful economic development tool designed to fund public infrastructure in targeted areas to encourage private development and investment. Considerable analysis has been prepared and reviewed by the state with outreach to affected taxing districts and multiple briefings for the public. There is no tax implication to individual property tax owner, property owners. A TIF strategy review was conducted with city council on April 8, 2024. Issuance of the TIF ordinance does not obligate the City of Lakewood to issue debt. The ordinance will allow the city a total of up to $15 million in bond capacity for public park land acquisition, park amenities, and related infrastructure. With me this evening is Mr. Bob Stowe, a consultant, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions by members of the council to Ms. Newton? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 802.
Second?
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Brandstetter, then we adopt ordinance number 802. Any further discussion? Again, this was a body of work subject to significant study by members of council. Mr. Boke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, I look forward to the improvements that will be financed by the tax increment financing, and we commit to that path tonight, but of course, nothing happens unless development happens, right? Or at least the first step can be taken on the first $2 million, but after that, we only have five years to have enough projects come in, and we already have one major one, very large one coming in to set up that, the bond financing for the rest of the, of the infrastructure needs. So I, I look forward to that, but you know, I know we will move prudently and future councils will move prudently with this, with this tool.
Very good. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. Boke that we're taking a step tonight based on expectations and that, however, I think that the expectations are, are well-founded. We have, from around the region and more, even more broadly, evidence that downtown areas can be reinvigorated, and we have a downtown area that needs that, and that a catalyst for that can be creating open space and parks and that make them more desirable places to live and work and to come and visit, to be able to go, go and do that. And so the fact that the infrastructure that we're looking to finance is to acquire properties and then develop them into enjoyable parks that can be used and that they can be used by the community as a whole, but also by new residents that come into the downtown area through the development of, 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 of housing and residential properties and of new employees that come to work in areas in the downtown. And that, that the parks will also, by attracting those other people, those parks will have an effect on the economic vitality of the businesses that come. That's been a model that has been proven to have worked for other communities. We look to make it new for us. Again, we're, 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 we're taking an action that is taking advantage of a new strategy, but one that doesn't actually increase anyone's taxes, but it shifts and it places some restrictions on us in terms of, for a period of time. We have defined what we're going to do based on any increases in taxes that are generated in the area. And so to the extent that we're limiting our future options to very clearly focus on parks and it looks like most likely multiple parks or parks in multiple locations in the downtown. I think that's something that we can do because we're not a full-service city, but we can, when we deal with infrastructure, we can deal with, with roads, and we can deal with parks, and we can deal with the infrastructure that deals with, with our water, stormwater things do that. And when we inherited the, the park system and incorporation, the downtown area was a big boy. There were, we did not inherit any real estate that was set aside and used for parks, and so we're going to have to go about that in a way, and, and in a way that's going to cost some money. And this tax increment financing program and being initiated through this ordinance is what is going to provide those funds to get the community what has been being asked for by many over the years.
Thank you. Any further comments of council? I'll just echo the comments by councilmembers Boke and Brandstetter. This, this is a tool that took years for the state legislature to adopt for the benefit of cities like Lakewood, cities like Lakewood that are limited in how they can incentivize development with good infrastructure improvements that are challenging to pay for without some mechanism. This is a mechanism, as indicated, that does not provide for tax increase to the residents. It is an increment financing tool, which means that the development doesn't occur. We don't expand the resources. And so it's, yes, based on some expectations, but expectations that have been fleshed out and somewhat developed by our city staff. But again, it's an increment financing tool. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance 802 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 802 has been adopted. We now turn to ordinance number 803. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 803, Amending the Lakewood Municipal Code Title III Revenue and Finance Property Tax Exemptions for Multi-Family Housing, Chapter 3.64030, Residential Target Area Designation and Standards Expanding the Central Business District Residential Target Area.
And for this overview, I'll ask again our Economic Development Director, Becky Newton, to provide some brief information.
Good evening again. And yes, beginning in your packet on page 175, it talks about the adoption of the ordinance for the expansion of the Central Business District Residential Target Area, noting that there has been several comments put forward over the last few weeks on, on, in particular for this ordinance. So city council updated the multifamily tax exemption program in 2023 to be in compliance with Chapter 84.14 RCW. At that time, there was discussion around expanding the Central Business District, RTA, which is an area that allows for the multifamily tax exemption. City council deferred expansion of the CBD to 2024 and asked that this be discussed by the Planning Commission, quarter one of 2024. Lakewood Planning Commission reviewed this CBD expansion proposal on February 7, 2024, and conducted an open public hearing February 21, which was continued through March 6, 2024. Resolution 2024-02 recommending expansion of the Central Business District Residential Target Target Area passed. Lakewood City Council reviewed Planning Commission resolution on March 25th and conducted a public hearing on April 1st, 2024. Several public comments, as I mentioned, were recorded and submitted. A couple of other comments also, just to add, expansion of the residential target area does not change the zoning, as which was mentioned by many of the commenters. Zoning was adopted through a very comprehensive subarea planning process that was noticed, and the subarea was adopted in October of 2018. The area is within the Lakewood Regional Growth Center as designated by the Puget Sound Regional Council, which means that we are anticipating a number of residential units and commercial residential, or commercial units to come into that area, in particular being a regional growth center. These are locations of the region's most significant businesses, governmental and cultural facilities, and are planning growth for growth and are focal points for planned growth, economic development, and transportation of infrastructure in the investments. The expansion expands the Central Business District to the westernmost boundary of the Central Business District, which is, as was mentioned, zoned for that type of use. And with that, I'll conclude my comments this evening and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. I will ask councilmembers if they have any clarifying questions of Ms. Newton. Seeing none, I am going to recuse myself from any consideration on this particular action item. My youngest middle daughter actually works for the architect and has done some work on this particular project. And I also know the owner of the property who seeks to develop this project. I will just say that he is not an out-of-towner. He is a Lakewood resident with a family history of decades here, but because of my knowledge and prior work with him, I'm going to recuse to avoid any appearance of impropriety, and I'm turning the gavel over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions for discussion?
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to be recognized. I would like to propose before, I would like for, before consideration, like to propose a motion. So my motion would be to move to send this item back to the Planning Commission for further consideration and recommendation to expand community notice, including postcard mailings, resident participation, and public hearing. And I just believe that there's a greater understanding on the ordinance that needs to be communicated to our residents.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been, motion was made by Councilmember Bell and seconded by Councilmember Trussell. So Ms. Bell, you want to have a discussion?
I believe I said what I needed to say is that I would like our residents to have more communication on this because I believe that's what we heard from everyone. We heard that they did not get enough notice. We heard that they did not have the adequate amount of participation. And I also believe that there is some more understanding and education on the actual ordinance that needs to be communicated to our residents.
Are there any questions? Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm going to support Councilmember Bell's motion to go back. I have to admit that I was, came here tonight, I was anticipating voting no on the expansion of the RTA as it was proposed, and perhaps sending it back to the Planning Commission can resolve some of the concerns that I had. Particularly, I was concerned about the stark contrast between the information that was presented to the Planning Commission at their public hearing and what was presented to us at our public hearing on the same, on the same matter. The other thing is, is that I am not convinced that there is a, just because the boundary line of the downtown is in one place, that the RTA boundary line needs to move to align with it. That's not a state requirement. And when we first established an RTA in the downtown and we incented, established some incentive areas, particularly in the Colonial District and in the, in the other area of downtown, that, and I haven't heard any good reason of why we need to move that original boundary to include these, these new areas to do that. In the previous reviews of the downtown plan, the Planning Commission has said, the plan is fine, there were no, no need to do some reviews. In fact, they said, we shouldn't review it so often. Give it time to work. It's a 20-year plan, so we can go through and do that. But the other thing is, is that in my philosophy, that a, it's not whether where multifamily things are allowed by zoning, it's where we are going to target incentives for them. And we have multifamily development that occurs throughout the city that are not inside RTAs, but I particularly value the RTAs that are in the Springbrook and in the Station District because they are looking at putting development where there is old residential infrastructure that has become in need of development to increase density to be able to go there. And multifamily tax exemptions serve as a one mechanism to prevent and mitigate displacement of low-income people from those areas that get developed by making sure that a number of the units, new units that come in, in the, in the multifamily increase in density are targeted at the income bands of where we're not going to completely displace people. In other words, it prevents, prevents complete gentrification. That's not the case for the area that we're, that this was talking about, but I am willing to let the Planning Commission take a closer look at it with, with other things and come back. And when they come back, and if they come back with a further recommendation with some rationale that makes sense to me, you know, I'm, I'm open to hearing that. It's just that in their recommendation to us, all they said was, we think changing the RTA boundaries further the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and promote overall health, safety, and welfare. That's pretty lacking in substance in terms of why we should do this. So, but, but I'm going to support Councilmember Bell's motion.
Mr. Bokey?
I will be supporting the motion. I think we do have to be clear with the Planning Commission. I do have a little bit of a disagreement. I am the representative that goes to the Planning Commission meetings. They were pretty clear, the majority was pretty clear in the meeting, that they really support the idea. They actually, if it was left to them, they would expand it beyond what we have now. They believe that it is necessary to increase the supply of housing in the city of Lakewood. That's the reason. There's no, you know, they, they signed on to that thing, but that's, that's their reason. I, I am going to back this. They will have another public hearing. I do want to note for the record and for the rest of the council, we are setting some precedents. And the, and one of the precedents is after the fact, after the, they had hearings, several hearings, noticed hearings, someone said, I didn't hear about it. That someone is an important person in the city of Lakewood. So we're now saying, yeah, okay, let's send it back. And fine, we have, we have the right to do that. But now we've set up the precedent that anybody can come up and just say, I didn't hear about it, and are we going to ship everything back? So the Planning Commission works under laws, right? They're different than the other advisory boards, so we need to be very, very careful. It's, I also, when I go and their meeting is Wednesday night, they're going to ask me, you know, we had all these hearings, they wrestled with it. They wrestled with this. It was actually a split, a split vote. We need to be clear what our expectations are. Just sending it back, have a couple more hearings, they're going to say, well, okay, so we're in the midst of trying to catch up with the, or to put the comp plan, the 10-year comp plan thing together. How much more time do you want us? How many more hearings do we have? If we have a hearing and 10 people show up, is that enough? Is 12, 8, 15? I don't know, right? So we've set some pretty nebulous parameters on this. Let's do it. Let's, let's ship it. They may change their mind on it. I think the majority stated clearly at the meeting where they were at, but we'll see where it goes. But I think we need to give them some direction as to what is a public hearing in the mind of the, of the council? Because they made, they met their legal definition, but they clearly didn't meet the definition that we'd like them to be. That's all I ask. When I walk in there Wednesday, that I've got an answer for them.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Councilmember.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a few weeks ago at our retreat, one of the items that was discussed was providing incentives for development, and that scored pretty well against the other items that we talked about. And so, you know, this seemed like another tool, or it is another tool, to incentivize some development. You know, this doesn't change the zoning on what's allowed in that particular area. So it's not targeting specifically in that small area that's being widened. It's, it's adding on to it. You know, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's probably adding, you know, maybe 5% to the total area. So it's, it's not targeting in one particular area. We have a housing issue and we have an affordable housing issue, and if we can, you know, help with those, I think that really benefits the citizens. I appreciate everyone's comments tonight, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea to go back to the Planning Commission with this, but I do also appreciate Mr. Bokey's comments regarding that folks have had notice, we've gone through this, and you know, if it goes back through Planning Commission, this might be another year until it comes back to us, you know, with what's on their agenda. So just, anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I seconded this motion because I thought it was important that we have this conversation and, and address some of the issues. One clear thing is it's a symptom of a systemic problem with informing our community to get folks in the loop about what's going on. With that said, coming into tonight's meeting, I was ready to vote no on the expansion based on the community feedback and understanding that we need to be better at utilizing the spaces that are already incentivized before expanding it and casting a bigger net. Because of that, when we come to vote on this motion, I think I will vote no with the anticipation of voting no on the MFT expansion. Thank you.
Any other comments? I will just add to my, through the comments, that, you know, we did hear that there wasn't enough information given. However, it never is. We always get someone that missed something, and we try to be honest and truthful to all of our residents. So I, I'm going to support the request. Give it one more chance and hope it doesn't settle precedence that we can't continue. Thank you. All in favor say aye of approval. Second motion, I'm sorry. It was, it was, the motion was made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Trussell, and so the, any, the motion was made to return this to the Planning Commission for further review. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. It passes, so it will go back to the Planning Commission for review. Thank you. Now I return the gavel to the mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That moots the next item on your agenda.
Which would be actual consideration of ordinance 803, correct? Thank you. So now we'll turn to resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2024-06, acknowledging the operation of the non-user statute and relinquishing any interest the city may have in unopened right-of-way as described herein and requested by abutting property owner Grange Properties LLC.
Thank you, and for this, we'll have our city attorney provide a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. This is that moment in consideration of the non-user statute's applicability where you would ratify the decision that was made by your legal department. As you know, there was no public testimony or input. There was notice provided in advance of that opportunity to be heard, but it's not as much a policy question as ratification of the legal determination that was made. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the city attorney on this matter? Seeing none, I need a motion to adopt resolution 2024-06.
So moved? Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Laura Sella, seconded by Councilmember Branstadter, then we adopt resolution 2024-06. Any further discussion? All in favor then signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2024-06 has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished business. Madam Clerk? No items.
There's no unfinished business.
Very good. So we'll turn to new business.
Motion number 2024-24, approving the Edgewater Park Master Plan.
Thank you. For this, I'll call on our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Director, Ms. Mary Dodsworth, for an overview.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members. This part of your packet starts on page 240, and I just want to, I'm Mary Dodsworth, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Director. I'd like to share a little bit about the preferred master plan that's been recommended by the Park Board for your consideration and approval. Last week, on April 8th, we spent quite a bit of time detailing the plan, going over the process, and talking about the recommended site plan that's presented tonight in your packet. As previously noted, we've been working on this plan since about 2018. We've had many community meetings. We've gathered information in lots of different ways. There's been surveys and studies and environmental review and to come up with the plan that you see tonight. So although we've gathered information in lots of different ways over five years, had lots of meetings, we heard kind of the same issues and concerns throughout the process. But to start off with, I just want to remind council that this is a master plan. This is not a construction drawing that we're talking about tonight. It's a conceptual drawing that's really to address all of the issues, the various park improvements, and a master plan's there to talk about, you know, need, growth, fill gaps in a park system, address safety concerns, et cetera. So sometimes it takes many, many years to implement a master plan. As you know, we have worked really hard on the American Lake Master Plan, we worked hard on the Harry Todd Master Plan, Harry Todd Master Plan, as well as the Wards Lake, and it's taken years to get to where you're actually starting to implement that plan because there's so much work that goes into, into developing a site plan and implementing an actual construction drawing or construction project before you get to making those changes. But the, again, we're looking at creating a long-range vision and plan for a park area, and also you have to have an approved master plan if you want to apply for, for funding. So what did we hear from our citizens regarding their issues and concerns? I think you've heard them too. Lack of parking. Lack of parking and illegal parking, um, no enforcement of illegal activities, speed, speeding through the neighborhoods, uh, traffic, no sidewalks, no pathways on the road, um, to get from here to there or throughout the park, lack of maintenance, uh, ish invasive plants, blackberries blocking views, the boat launch, big issue, steep, shallow water, no parking for trailers. The, uh, launching is right at a three-way stop. It's interfering with traffic. Water, uh, stumps in the water are dangerous. There's no mortgage. So you're having to tie your boat up to a tree as you're, after you launch it to go figure out where you're going to park your trailer. Uh, concerns regarding increased use of the park and lake if we make improvements, uh, that there's no ADA access, there's no bathrooms, there's no places to fish or site furnishings. And they're concerned regarding the impacts to wildlife and in the environment. So that's why you create a master plan is you take all of those issues and concerns and just say, instead of saying, don't do anything because we don't want to see anything changes. How do we fix those problems? And that's really what this master plan has done. It's looked at the issues and concerns and tried to make solutions that could be, um, improvements to that area. Safety was a very high priority. Safety is always a high priority when we look at planning or even, um, implementation of plans or programs because we want to make sure we're hanging out for the citizens, the site and the city's best interests. So what did we do? What did we see in the master plan? We talked about making roadway improvements. We looked at, there's traffic calming. There's ways, uh, there was one-way streets proposed to reduce speeding. Um, they were created in ways that, um, reflected what the neighbors' concerns were about. They were concerned about parking. Um, they were concerned about where they put their garbage cans and where their mail gets collected. So we looked at those issues. We talked about parking and adding parking, 19 defined parking spaces. Right now, people are parking everywhere. There are no defined spaces down there. They're blocking sidewalks. They're just parking in the middle of the road. They're parking in front of people's driveways. So we created parking spots to reduce those impacts to the neighbors. We also specifically, um, put parking in areas, uh, and we reduced the number of parking because we were concerned about impacts to trees. We didn't want to reduce the number of trees and reduce the tree canopy in that area. Um, we also created ADA parking. So those folks that have, uh, limited mobility can get to the park and actually access the water. Pedestrian safety, adding hard surface pathways within the park and along the sidewalks. We added crosswalks and speed bumps. Again, pedestrian safety, uh, was important. Boat launch, that was a big issue. It was a big issue five years ago, was a big issue today. We talked about moving the launch so that we could get better access, add one way in and one way out to remove the launching at a three-way stop. And we added, uh, vehicle trailer parking and temporary mortgage for folks. Water safety, we heard a lot of concerns. People are swimming and fishing right in the boat launch where it currently is located. And so people were really concerned about that. And so we added a pier for fishing on one end and wildlife viewing. And we defined a swimming area. And then we created a hand carry launch so you could separate those, um, areas from the, the boat launching, motorized boat launching. So you could boatfish, wouldn't wade and swim and not conflict with each other, uh, with those activities. Environmental protection. We wanted to create access areas to, to areas that didn't have wetlands and they, and, um, sensitive areas. So there are a few pocket beaches created, but that's to encourage people to go places so that you're not encouraging them to go into these, um, environmental areas, into the nesting areas. So, um, that's a real specific, we do that along trail development too. You put trails into areas and then you add native, you remove invasive plants and native plants, native plants. It, it improves the environmental, um, areas, uh, and for wildlife, but it also discourages people from tromping through. Right now, there's just tromping all along the shoreline and there's quite a few wetlands in there. You can see it on the plan. Um, park amenities. We've added primarily passive park amenities, some benches, picnic tables, a little shelter, trash cans, uh, restroom and signage, things that you, um, can make it nicer when you go down to the park. You're walking your dog, you can stop and look at the water, you can look at the ducks and the birds. Uh, and so they're just ways of being able to passively use that site, uh, and enjoy that waterfront area. Uh, we do know that enforcement seems to be a concern. So working with our police department to make sure that they're down there during those super hot days. You know, if you're at any of our waterfront areas in the city, it's extremely busy on those hot, hot days. People are parking here and there. They're trying their hardest to get to, to the water. And so really encouraging and increasing enforcement on those days. And then of course concern, are we going to be able to take care of this park if we fix it? If we improve it? And I think that the park has, has a history of doing that. You've seen that throughout our parks, uh, and I think that the city does a good job of doing that. Um, we did review this in detail, lots of community meetings, lots of public input. There are a lot of folks that, um, were really concerned about changes, but we also heard from folks that sometimes were nervous about making their statements in public meetings because they do want to see changes. They live, don't live along that street. They live a block above or around the corner and they come to that park. They come to that park all the time with their grandkids. They push their stroller, they walk from here to there, they utilize it, um, in the mornings and in the evenings. And they're excited about the park improvements. Might not have heard that voice as loudly as some of the others, but there are, um, citizens that are interested in making those improvements. Um, after we made improvements to the other parks in there, in our city, and we've made lots of improvements throughout the city, we're not just focusing on Edgewater Park. We've made improvements throughout the system to make them better for the neighbors, uh, and the people that are living in that area. And we're really trying to create a vision for the future. Um, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but we have to have a starting point to know where we want to go. And that's what, um, the park board has recommended to you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. Any questions? Mr. Brandstetter?
Ms. Dodsworth, I just wanted to clarify one point in the evolution of how we've been working on trying to develop, uh, and getting to this point with Edgewater Park going back to 2018. And that original concepts regarding it, um, did not include the property that we've now moved to acquire through eminent domain. Uh, that that was really trying to resolve, uh, ownership issues with that property. There was a good bit of time when it was tried to resolve, uh, in other ways with the property owner, uh, that, that didn't involve eminent domain or the transfer of ownership of the entire property. Uh, and it was only in 2023 that it became clear that we weren't going to be able to do that, uh, and, and that the, an option for, for, for the initial draft of the master plan, uh, was included, that included that property. Is that timeline right?
That is correct. In the original, not the original, the first round of master planning that we did throughout 2018 and 19, um, we just looked at repairing and, uh, the boat launch that's there now. And we certainly looked at that as an option during this process too. Um, we didn't recognize that at that time we hadn't, we typically don't do, uh, surveys and things like that for a master plan because you're not doing construction drawings. So, um, in 2023, when we started looking at road improvements, um, engineers do do surveys in order to make decisions regarding, um, traffic. And so that's when we discovered those, um, issues. Well, it was probably 2020. We worked for three years to try and solve the issue to see how we could, um, remedy that situation. And the homeowner, I still don't think today thinks there's a problem that has to be solved. So the city has to, um, move forward with trying to solve that problem, which includes encroachment. And it's not just on that property. There's encroachment along Edgewater Drive. And we've talked to a lot of the different residents and rec, who have encroached in that area over the years because they might not have known where the property line was. And, um, and so we've talked to them about some of these changes and we're looking at, uh, minimal impacts, but it is public right of way. And so it is the public's land to use to solve some of these problems like safety, parking, access to this open space area.
Mr. Boki. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Dodworth, Dodsworth for your presentation. Let's just kind of take a 5,000-foot view of this. Access to water, uh, a city of 60-plus thousand people, 63,000 people at the last census. Where do we have access to water? And what do the parks look like on a weekend during the summer when it's hot?
So currently in established parks, we have American Lake, which is on the north side of American Lake. We have Harry Todd, which is on the south side of American Lake. And, um, on a hot summer day, they are packed. There's a street end at the end of Lake City Boulevard, which is a very undeveloped, it's just a street end, and it's packed. And there are days in the summer where you couldn't provide enough parking if you tried. You couldn't provide enough access. But there's very, very limited public access to water in a city that's named Lakewood. Very limited access. And so part of doing this improvement is to make it when people are accessing the area that they're doing it in a safer manner, less impacting to the site and hopefully less impact to the neighbors. And then, um, again, council approved a street end report last year. And there are several, a street end is basically a street end that goes to water. And so there is a plan over the next several years to see, um, how we can improve those so that people in the neighborhoods can access the water closer to their homes, uh, or however they want to get there. And it may reduce some of the impact in some of our other areas. But right now they're just undeveloped spots that aren't really set up for public access. And again, the city has limited resources. And so we've been, over the last 26 years as a city, slowly been making improvements to the different sites. Um, and it takes time and resources to do that. And so we've tried to be sort of systematic and strategic in how we've done that. And this is just another step in that direction.
And this is a, you mentioned this, this is a three-phase project.
Yeah.
Could you, could you talk about that?
Well, I didn't so much talk about that tonight, but we looked at a master plan as a whole. That's what you're approving tonight is the master plan as a whole. But like, um, any plan, we can't always do everything at once. We don't, might not have the resources, we might not have the access, we might not have the means to do that. So park board did look at a three-phased element. For instance, phase one would be some boat launch improvements, wherever that might be. Phase two is more just parkland improvements. And then phase three was the improvements at Foster. And the reason for that was is that although the improvements along Foster are really going to support, can, you know, use of that area, it's really primarily transportation. And it really wouldn't be eligible for, uh, some of the park grants that we typically apply for. So divide, or so having that be a part of the master plan to show you've looked at the big picture is important, but, um, it would probably be maybe a future transportation project to actually do the foster improvements because, um, again, it, it ties to the benefit of the whole project, but isn't necessarily a park improvement.
And just to follow up on that then, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, boat launch, um, what percentage, and it may not be a fair question if you don't have the answer, just say I don't have the answer. There's the motorized people going into the lake. And we've heard, you know, you know, there's, there's more than a little opposition now to, and that's a discussion, I guess the council will have to have at some further date about not allowing motorized vessels on the lake. But in non-motorized kayaks and whatnot, do you know the split between that?
Well, we know from, we did two different traffic studies in that area over this last year. And what we saw pretty consistently was a third of the people using the boat launch now were in non-motorized crap.
Okay.
So if you had 60 people doing it over a period of three or four days, a third of those folks were non-motorized.
Okay.
And that's why we created in the master plan, an area to get to, with some additional parking to allow people to do non-motorized access away from the boat launches there today.
Okay. And how many public hearings were held in total? I know we've had people comment here before. I don't know that we've, we had a, I can't remember if we had a full-blown public hearing, but how many hearings did you?
For this round, we had three public meetings plus a park board meeting. So there were three pub, three community meetings that were notified, emailed, posted, signs at the park. We probably had well over 50, 60 people at each meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? I have a question for you. So as you've indicated, the master plan is a conceptual drawing. Is it fair to say then that the scope can change over time to something less than the full meal deal?
Absolutely. Sure.
And, and typically, how does that play out? By council direction, uh, resources allocated by council? How can the master plan change from what could be adopted tonight to something that actually is constructed on the ground?
Well, um, council would make that determination because they'd, say they approve, say you approve the master plan tonight in it, in its entirety. And then we would look at funding, how do we fund it? So a way to reduce it is, you know, the amount of money you can put towards a project allows you to do certain kinds of improvements. Um, when you start looking at doing site development, which would be something more specific, like a construction drawing, which would get you closer to how you might improve it. There's other, it could be environmental issue, it could be access issue, it could be, um, permitting, there's different things that would then change how that might happen. It could reduce it, it could move where something is from here to there, uh, depending on, um, how that plays out. So all of those things, you know, whether council direction, um, or other kinds of reasons, other kinds of reasons for making those changes.
So council would have discretion even after proposed adoption of the master plan to make modifications to it, either by will or by resources?
Absolutely. So typically the process would be you'd approve the master plan and then we would come back to you with, this is what we're doing next. And maybe it's a phase, maybe it's a, uh, application for a grant or something. And council's typically briefed along the ways, usually at 30%, 60%, 90% to 100. And that's if you're actually moving forward with a project. And, and at each of those phases, you make decisions along the way with trees, benches.
Right.
Resources. Typically you get cost estimates along the way. So absolutely, council, council can make those decisions all along the way and you always do.
Could, could revise it, could restrict it, could reduce it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further questions? Uh, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. I appreciate the effort that the, uh, Parks Advisory Board has gone to engage with the community and, uh, is, is working to address the concerns that came up, including better maintenance, better safety patrols, both at the park and in the water. Uh, and I encourage you to continue to engage with the community. And finally, to make sure we're practicing good environmental stewardship. Uh, you talked about directing people to areas so that they're not trampling native plants and, and causing issues there. I had one question about the current usage of the boat launch. Uh, do we know how much of that usage is residents of the lake itself, waterfront homeowners launching their own boats?
We, we haven't done any of that kind of research. We do know that, um, early in the season, late in the season, we get a lot of the homeowners that are on the lake are using the boat launch to put their boats in and pull the boats out. Several times when we were doing site visits down there for various reasons, there were folks, um, that live on the lake pulling their, their lake out, especially as the water starts dropping. So, um, but we don't have any, um, any data regarding, um, from license plates or anything like that. No.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Very good. Do we have a motion to approve motion 2024 dash 24? I move, uh, approval of motion number 2024 dash 24. I have a second. It's been moved by Councilmember Boki and seconded by Councilmember Pearson that we adopt motion 2024 dash 24. Further discussion? Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion of, you know, uh, you know, approving a master plan for a park is just the next step in the sequence. When we've, the city incorporated, we inherited some parks. And we inherited Port Silicon Park, American Lake North Park, Harry Todd Park, uh, Wards Lake Park, this, this park, a couple of other smaller sites. All of them had been, you know, at various stages of neglect from the management of Pierce County. They all did that. Over, over time, the city has used the process of look at things, make master plans and then, and then work from there to finalize developments and improvements. And, and we've done it sequentially in the parks in, in the order in which they seem to be serving a greatest number of residents. Like Port Silicon Park and Harry Todd Park do that. We We, Springbrook Park sort of came into being, it wasn't really a park when we inherited it, but, but the community helped that do that. And mostly, we, we were getting to final stages of where we're doing. But all of those improvements started the master plan. And now Edgewater Park is the next most significant park property, whose time it is for us to essentially really begin to work on this process to do that. And because we should be encouraged by our success in that the parks that we have, they don't look exactly like the original master plans. They look better, to be really honest. And I think that that will be the case that is, that is here. And we, and Edgewater Park needs to be better. It needs to be a safer boat launch. It needs to be a place where people can go. And, and, and as we've invest in it, you know, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we also invest in the security and maintenance and other things, which is something that the Parks Board always tells us, don't start doing things if you don't, you're not going to fund maintaining them to be able to go into that. And it's just like with roads. With roads, you've got to have a transportation improvement plan, which is the equivalent of a master plan, which is a vision for what you want. And because that is the key that gets you in the door to funding sources. And so, and that's, that's why we need to take this next step and move forward to it. And I think it's, you know, it's important that is, that as we do so over the next, what will be years, and both working through the, the permitting processes that also involve anything on, on, on water. Okay? I think it'll look largely like this, but I think that it, 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 it will evolve. And we'll, we'll, we'll end up with a park down the road that the city, you know, include the neighborhoods and the neighbors in the immediate area, but greater cities will agree in the end that it, it's better than what's there now, and it is an improvement. I'm going to say that I have seen in the five years that I've been monitoring our work on this park, okay, in terms of, from the original sequences of ideas and discussions with the neighborhood through the community meetings, and looking at the various drafts of the master plan before it came to us tonight, I have seen where community input has impacted on, on, on what, in getting us to where we are tonight. But, yeah, again, the master plan is not a 100% design drawing. It's a, it's a somewhere in a, maybe a 50% vision of what, 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 what we'd like to do. And then we'll get into the what is doable. And that'll be the best way to do that. In the same way that we're not quite at this stage yet, but that as we pass the TIF ordinance today, that we're going to end up be, starting to identify some real estate and some properties that are going to become parks in the, in the central businesses who that will then have to also go through this same process of start with getting a master plan so that you can articulate your vision to the people that have dollars. And we'll work through doing that. But I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we've gotten to this point. It's Edgewater Park's time to start to have some improvements done, done with it.
Any further discussion points, Mr. Bokey, and then Mr. Laura Sella?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been, it was mentioned earlier this evening, and I'll reiterate, it is a city goal to improve access, public access to water. The lakes are public waterways. We have a good, well-thought-out plan. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and staff for all their hard work on this. It was, I mean, when they started talking in 2018, that was a while ago. When this started, there's been a lot of thought. I know the meetings haven't, the public hearings haven't always been constructive. They certainly weren't, I guess I was surprised at the level of discourse, a little bit disappointed sometimes at the level of discourse on a lot of this. I want to point out that any construction at the park will meet current environmental standards. Thank you very much, Ms. Dodsworth, and, and Councilmember Branstadter. You're going to have to put in native vegetation. It's one of the reasons the cost is going to be high. You're going to have better than what you have now, which is blackberries, which aren't a native, although we think they are because they're everywhere, but they are not native to the area, is my understanding. They will be gone. We will have native plants. Even the boat launch will have to go through a lot of permitting. It's not a done deal because the state jealously guards their water. And we also have to remember that there's the Nisqually tribes out there, and we have a very good working relationship with them. And it, it is about saving fish, and any of the docks are going to have to meet current standards. So actually, the, the, the park will be the, the gold standard, really. It'll meet all the current standards of, of what you, what you have to do in order to have a dock or in order to have a boat launch. And so I'm, I'm actually hoping that there'll be improvements to water quality. And so I'm, I, I think a lot of people put in a lot of hard work, and I'm supportive of going forward with the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo a little bit of what Councilmember Branstadter and Councilmember Bokey said. The Parks Board and our city staff has done exhaustive work to find a way to approach this and engage with the community and address the issues as they come up. I think this plan, as it comes together, will make Edgewater Park safer, more accessible, serving all residents of the city, and should serve as an example for future projects on how to be responsible stewards of park property in the city. So I'm in favor of it as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everyone else's comments, all my other council members' comments here, and I won't repeat them. But, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of great aspects of, of the park plan. And I, I like the idea of phasing it, you know, we'll see what we get. And, and, and we'll also see, you know, what other kind of road improvement projects we get in the area where we might be able to, you know, maybe morph it and provide some pedestrian connectivity down there that may eliminate some parking and be, you know, maybe function more like a passive recreation park than, you know, and, and a neighborhood park rather than a city park. And I think that we have some kind of, some work to do on the vision of the park there with, is it really a city park? Or is it, you know, is it a, a neighborhood park? And I, I lean towards neighborhood park. But I, I would certainly would love to see some sidewalks leading down there from the Colonial Plaza area and being able to funnel people down that way rather than driving and having to provide parking and all those sorts of things that come along with that. So, but great work on, on this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it brief as I will echo my fellow council members' same sentiments. I really do appreciate that improved public access will be there. And I do think it is part of our greater contributions to Lakewood as we create our legacy with our parks. We have a great reputation with our parks, and I feel like this is something that will just add to it. And I also want to really keep on what Councilmember Branstadter said, that this master plan is a concept. And as previous parks that we have done, they vary quite differently from what the concept and the drawings are to what the actual park is. So I think that that's very important. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I will add my two or four cents to the conversation. And my comments are perhaps both personal in nature as well as hopefully broad scoped from a policy perspective. So I'm the only one sitting on this dais that is your neighbor on the water at Lake Silicon. And if there's anyone here incentivized to not have traffic or more access or boats, quote unquote, to the lake, it would be me. But I recognize in the role that I serve as one of the privileged few who gets to live on the lake, certainly pay taxes, I pay a lot of them. But as one of the privileged few, I also recognize that I have a wider duty sitting in this seat. And that is to represent the interests of not just me, or my family, or necessarily my neighbors, but those who would like to enjoy the privilege of having access to one of the waterfront lakes in Lakewood. We have incredible lake access at American Lake. And, you know, we have two wonderful parks there that give me a warm sense of comfort that our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, for whom much gratitude is owed for their selfless work, along with our staff, they have done incredible work to make those two park accessways, Harry Todd and American Lake Park, fabulous. And why should I believe that whatever work that they do at Edgewater Park will be less than fabulous, based upon the history that I've had here, 15 years sitting in the seat, 21 years as your neighbor on Fort Silicon or on Lake Silicon, and putting, you know, our family's resources into living in a place where we raised our three daughters? It's important to me that we maintain the safety and reduce the issues that the neighbors have properly brought forth about concerns for security and cleanliness. I get it. But I also get it when I drive, because I'm right around the corner, folks. I'm like five docks to the left of Edgewater Park. And I drive down Edgewater Drive, if not every day, almost every day. I see the boats every day that go through. And most of them, for most of the year, are people with passive recreation. They're paddle boarding, they're kayaking. I have Fisher people in my cove every morning. And I've got a boat. Finally, it took me, we only got a boat, a used boat, two years ago. My kids have lived in that lake without a boat because I didn't want to pay for one for 20, 19 years. We've been doing paddle boarding and kayaks for 19 to 20 years. I finally got a boat. I go and use that boat launch one time a year as a resident of the city of Lakewood to put my boat in, I guess twice a year, and to take it out. Couldn't take it out last year because the water level was too low. So I sat on my dock and I put a little heater in the engine thing, so I didn't lose the one little tiny asset we bought for my kids to enjoy. But that said, on those occasions, in those hot summer nights, in those hot summer weekends that I would drive down Edgewater Park, and I would see families with young kids struggling to find a patch of crappy grass to sit on so their kids could walk in and get cool. It's not right. So our work as a council is to provide a vision for the future, not just for the privileged few of us, but for all residents. And that includes those people who don't have access to the lake, who may live in Springbrook, may live in Silicon. And they may like to have an opportunity to take their son or daughter down to a waterfront venue that's accessible to them. It's not overgrown with weeds, that has some safety for purposes of having a place to park when people are rushing in and rushing out with trailers. It's the right thing to do. The Park Board has worked very hard over a long period of time to make a long-term recommendation, not for the Waylands of the world, but for the residents of this city. The home, as it impacts the right of way, I very much appreciate all of the concerns expressed about the condemnation proceeding. And I'm not going to go into all of the legalities involved in that, but suffice it to say, we take these decisions very seriously. And this one had significant encroachment on the right of way. And when we're developing a master plan, as you're hearing discussed tonight, we have to make decisions for the benefit of the community as a whole. Now, I have to tell you, because I live on Hollyhedge Lane, that Mount Tacoma Drive is going to be improved in 2026. Design is in 2025. It's going to be done in 2026. And as Councilmember Pearson indicated, it'll be wonderful to have access for people to walk to one of the lakes. I've always thought, what a wonderful way to really enjoy life, to be able to have a pedestrian-friendly, safe place to walk and see the lake. Well, that's going to happen. But don't you know the right of way abiding our residential neighborhood, Hollyhedge, is 60 feet? My neighbors were shocked when they heard about the street improvements that are going to come to our neighborhood because it's going to have some impact. Because like everyone else, our neighborhood, over the course of time, a construct from Pierce County back in 1990 when the develop was done, there's a lot of stuff, not homes, but there's a lot of landscape and improvements encroaching into the right of way. We have to recognize we're going to have some impact. And we had an interesting session at my house for the Homeowners Association meeting when I brought this up and showed them maps. It's the city's property, people. So we've had the same conversations as many of you have had. And I've struggled with the same issues that many of you have articulated. But I have confidence that we can do a good job with this park like we have done with all the other parks in the city. Because we have a vision and a goal, and we're now in the process of executing, even though, as you heard Ms. Dodsworth say, the whole master plan concept can change over time. We, we may restrict it down based on resources. None of us wants to outspend resources we don't have, but we want to do the best we can for the greatest good for the residents of the city as a whole. So I'm going to support the master plan for these reasons. And I hope you trust us to do it right. And I see you shaking your head. I get it. I get it. But I'm going to support it nonetheless because I trust us to do the right thing. I live there. I see it. I experience it. And I'm willing to trust that we're going to do the right thing.
Any further questions, comments, discussion items? All those in favor of adoption of resolution 2024-24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries. Resolution 2024-07, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2024-07, authorizing the city manager to seek grant funding assistance managed through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Edgewater Park capital improvement projects.
For this again, I'll call in Ms. Dodsworth.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, we appreciate your kind words from the previous project as well. This is a pretty straightforward resolution. It's a requirement of the granting agencies to allow the city to apply for funds, just to make sure that we have council approval to move forward with, just looking for resources. Doesn't guarantee anything. It just allows us to apply for grants regarding this project in the future.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Dodsworth on this item? If not, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-07? So moved. It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt resolution 2024-07. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has been adopted. We now turn to reports by the city manager, Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I just have some upcoming events for the month of April. On April 17th, at 7:30 a.m., we have the Los Angeles Annual Friend Raising Breakfast at the Big Abbot Center. On April 24th, at 5:30 p.m., Lakes High School Student Celebration of Arts at St. Clair Hospital. On April 25th, at 6 p.m., we have the Lakeview Light and Power 102nd Annual Meeting here at Lakewood City Hall. April 26th, at 5:30 p.m., we have top off at 6:30 p.m. for the 15th Annual Cops versus Teachers Charity Basketball Game and Silent Auction at Lakes High School. On April 27th, we have the Parks Appreciation Day at Harry Todd, Fort Silicon Park, and Community Gardens, Edgewater and Kiwanis Park. On April 27th, at noon or 1 p.m., the ribbon cutting dedication of the new ball fields at Fort Silicon Park. And lastly, on April 27th and 28th, at 8 a.m. till 2 p.m., we have the spring community cleanup at the Lakewood Transfer Station. And if any of the city council members are interested in And if any of the city council members are interested in participating and volunteering, please contact Assistant to the City Manager, Michael Vargas. And that's all I have for the month of April.
Well, thank you very much. There's plenty of things going on on the 26th. It's multiple things on the same day, so it'll be a busy day for all of us. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Well, thank you. Oh, Ms. Schumacher.
Mayor, as it relates to the April 25th Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting, we do need the city council to identify a council member who would be the voting member for the city for that meeting. If we could get some responses for that this evening.
Anyone would like to go, Mr. Branstad? Thank you very much. Vote well and vote often, as they say. Okay, any other questions? Council comments, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Just give me a second here. We've got a planning commission meeting on Wednesday. I think I mentioned that earlier. I'm trying to pull up the agenda here. I'm having difficulty now. And then on, okay, so Wednesday, they're going to discuss the six-year transportation improvement plan and then look at the preliminary draft of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Element and Regulations. And then they're going to get a report from the council liaison. That would be me. So I guess I got to get my talking points in line. And so that's what they're working on. Thursday evening is a PCRC meeting. No, it doesn't look like there's any action items on the agenda, so.
There is one.
Is there one?
It's to adopt the funding recommendations on those transportation projects that don't include Lakewood, by the way.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so that's Thursday. And then we head off into the weekend. Cops vs. Teachers. That weekend is a great weekend for Lakewood, right? Because there's so much going on. You didn't mention your little Rotary soiree. The cops vs. teachers thing is actually really important because I think he's raising money this year for after-school or the evening program with the Y, which is something the school district is hugely supportive of. They, we've put money in into it. The school district, I think, continues to put ARPA money into it or their version of ARPA called ESER. And so this is a big deal and really proud of Baron and who's a Lakes 1981 Lakes High grad and teaches at Lakes. So, and his commitment to this. But the rest of the weekend, I also really, really want to remember, and thank you, Ms. Kraus, for reminding me of the St. Clair event, which I think I missed last year. And I really enjoy it. Yeah, when they put out their photography for the year right at St. Clair. And that's, what time is that, 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. Thank you very much. So I'll leave it at that. I think I've said everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorisella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciated, over the past few weeks, the public comments we've received. And it's specific to Edgewater Park. To me, it's about access to all or access for all to our lakes, but also to information. So we talked about that a little bit tonight, too, in terms of getting the word out and finding new ways to engage with the community. On the topic of the tax increment financing area, echoing what folks said, it really is a tool that enables us to invest in our community and improve our downtown core without increasing taxes to our residents, which is, it's a win-win. So I appreciate that. And finally, on the MFTE expansion, it just showed that we are listening to our community and are getting more clarification to understand what the benefits would be towards going that path. So I look forward to hearing what the planning commission comes back with. Finally, on Wednesday, I'll be attending the South Sound 911 meeting, their bimonthly meeting, and representing the city there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Branstad. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll be going to the cops vs. teachers game we went last year with the kids and had a great time. It's a really fun event. So it's great, great to see everyone to get together. And they've got auctioning little items and things out in the hallway, and you can go get food. And, oh, yeah, it's a really great event. There's little vendors that, you know, are selling stuff. And so it's like a kind of a mini farmer's market, like at the school kind of thing. It's a good time. And, yeah, I'll be going to the Rotary thing after. I think it's next day, but that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, in the lobby area, there was the Pierce College Faculty Art Showcase featuring new artwork that is up on the walls out there. And it's really great stuff. They, a little note, it says, "As you explore the show, notice each artist has their unique way of making and seeing the world around them, much of which is influenced by the Pacific Northwest." So it's just a really beautiful show. And it's the second quarter artist reception that we had today. But they will be up there throughout the rest of this quarter. So I encourage you to go check it out and stop by City Hall. And I wanted to just say thank you to the staff and our boards and commissions for all of their presentations and really just supplying us with information that we need to know and that we can hopefully help our residents understand a little bit better. And so I appreciate all the hard work that they put into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say to you, thank you for the explanation you did about you living on the water and that you will experience some of the same discussions that have we've heard from others. So thank you for that. It was very clear where your heart is. A trip to DC last, this week. Last week? Last week was very effective. I think Mayor will give you more details on that. I will be participating in the cleanup on the weekend. I will be going to the St. Clair Art Show there. Appreciate the Pierce College art that was there tonight. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. It's been a busy week. And let me just lead off with a question to the city manager, acting city manager on Ardmore and 93rd. The streets are open. Looks great. I know we're waiting to get striping. As I drove down last night, my question was lighting. Are there going to be additional new lights like we have in the newer sections of streetscapes that we've done? Are they on hold, on order? Where are we with lighting?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, it was conspicuously absent. I didn't even see the basis for lighting. I'm a little concerned about that. So that would be nice to know. In terms of this last week, as Deputy Mayor indicated, she and I and the city manager went to Washington, D.C. to do our annual advocacy piece with our legislative delegation. The issues that we pursued were, number one, to say thank you for the contributions toward the South Tacoma Way project, $2.4 million project that will be the last link in a major arterial from the edge of Tacoma to about 96, 84th, 96th in that area in Lakewood. And that'll be a good project. So we appreciated the help with that, as well as the federal contribution toward the Lhasa 25-unit affordable housing project that's going to happen, thankfully, due to the funding sourcing from staff, from Pierce County, from, of course, the city of Lakewood, and from the federal government and the state of Washington. So a good project. In addition to that, we advocated for some changes to what's called medium-sized city set-asides for transportation funding, including the opportunity to get a RACE. The acronym escapes me, but a RACE Planning Grant to do the work we're trying to do to complete the linear park called the Green Street Loop. The planning and Parks and Rec Board is well familiar with. So that seems to be falling on very positive ears in Washington, D.C. So we're hopeful that if the planning grant gets adequately scored and gets on the Secretary of Transportation's desk, that all the folks with whom we came in contact will make a favorable call to Secretary Buttigieg and say, Lakewood, the little town over there in Western Washington, they deserve this wonderful planning grant. And so we'll make good use of those monies if and when they come. And finally, we've worked on the Joint Base Lewis McCord Clear Zone Project. We do that every year. We're talking about getting a change to the ND, the National Defense Authorization Act, the language in a report that will encourage the Army side of the equation to help expedite commercial transactions as we push to clear the Clear Zone. So those were the topics in Washington, D.C., and the meetings, we think, went quite well. So I got back at 2:00, we got back at 2:00 in the morning on whatever day it was now. I don't remember, but it's just been a blur. Tonight, I went to the Clover Park School District to provide the city's report. I was duly notified by the chair of the Clover Park School District that my youngest daughter was babysitting your children. And I immediately told her she should request a raise. So hopefully, that was taken care of tonight before you go home. Councilmember Pearson. On Wednesday, I will attend the Goodwill Lunch, which is always a great event. Thursday night, as Mr. Bokey indicated, we have Pierce County Regional Council. And then the following weekend is a myriad of events, including, I think we mentioned the ribbon cutting for the new ball field for Raider/Lakewood Baseball and the Parks Appreciation Day and the Lakewood Rotary Event later that evening, which, again, we're all getting together to raise more money, to invest in good things for this community. So lots of good things happening. Last thing I want to just say is a thank you, not just to our staff, Ms. Dodsworth and her staff, but Mr. Gerwin and his compatriots on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I also want to thank the public for making public comment. And even though it's challenging and the issues are difficult and folks have lots of opinions, we appreciate the constructive dialogue. It's really important to have constructive dialogue because we're just neighbors sitting up here in positions that have been entrusted with the opportunity to make as best decisions we can. We're not perfect people. And as you know from your comment, you don't believe we're making perfect decisions. But that's okay. We're going to make the best decisions we can collectively with your input. The thing that I have to tell you, when I read social media, and I think one person indicated that's a bad thing, and I should probably never look at social media. But some of the comments out there are less than constructive, shall we say. When the comments surface about how crooked we all are, that we don't care, that we're in it for the money, really. Those kinds of comments really bother me. And not because it's me personally, but because of the work that these folks do and those folks do. And I know our heart is in the game. Again, we can differ on the policy perspectives like well-meaning people did tonight on whether to incentivize residential target areas. That's a great policy discussion to have and get constructive feedback. But if people talk about how crooked we are or that we're not doing it for the right reasons, that's a comment that's not constructive. And I really appreciate all of your comments tonight because it was constructive. And for that, I thank you. Mr. Bokey.
I do want to make a comment. EFN had their grand opening, and I did make it.
Very good.
And a lot of folks there. And it was on over an $8 million project. It is one heck of a warehouse over 20,000 square feet.
Largest food distribution network in the county.
Yeah. And big, you know, the whole racking thing is all in. It's all ready to go. So the plan is, so we put a three-quarters of a million dollars into that thing.
At least, yeah.
Matching what the county put in, by the way, much larger government. And now they're going to move all the food from the old warehouse into the new one. And they have to do some safety improvements, life safety improvements, to the existing warehouse, which the other portion of our money is going to fund, according to Michelle Douglas. So we played a major role in that. We should be very proud. And then remember, I don't know that they know yet because I didn't get a chance to tell Michelle that we're going to make those improvements, that we have the light there coming in at 92nd, is it? So just wanted you to know, great event. It's up and running, and it's a heck of a step forward for EFN.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate you going to that as we were not able to. So again, thank you all for your comments tonight. Without need for any further comments from our acting city manager, this meeting is adjourned.